And then I'm gonna let everyone in. Uh, still have two more coming in, hold on. Okay.
Ready?
We're ready.
Flag. Raise for flag, please. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the two republics.
What you saying?
One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Christie, you're on.
Yep. Um, this regular meeting of the Bradley Beach zoning board of adjustments now called Carter. We asked that everyone please silence all devices and move to a quiet location. Please keep your devices muted until you're called upon to speak as background. These are distracting the others and they do not allow for a clear record of these proceedings. Hold on one second. Uh, forty eight hour notice has required when the open public meetings act has been met as notice this meeting is emailed on February third, twenty twenty one and published in the Asbury Park press, the poster and the poster. A copy has been placed on the bulletin board in the borough office and a copy has been filed with Borough Clark. Um, Mr. Quinlan?
Hello there.
Mr. Are you participating by phone?
Yeah, no, by computer.
Uh, I see you now, I see you. Uh, Mr. Wade?
Here.
Mr. Afuso?
Here.
Mr. Cretelli?
Here.
Ms. Brunel?
Here.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Here.
Ms. Saracene?
Here.
Ms. Leahy?
Here.
Mr. Mayor?
Here.
And Chair Rosenberg?
Here.
And also present, Mark Katrik, attorney of the board Gerald Frida, board engineer and Christine Bell, board planner. Whoever's phone number is seven three two seven seven one five seven six six, I'm gonna have to mute you. There's a lot of noise coming from your location. Okay.
I'm gonna read our statement just in case. This meeting will be recorded for transcription purposes. No member of the public shall yell from the audience or speak out of turn as it will disrupt the official record. Please stay on mute until called on. Once the Board of Adjustment accepts service on the application, the applicant will proceed to call witnesses. This is a continuation. The applicant or their attorney will first examine each witness. Next, the members of the board will ask questions and cross examine witnesses. Finally, the members of the audience will entitled to cross examine witness, asking questions only related to testimony given. This is not the time when members of the audience will give testimony, present evidence or make comments. Once the applicant has been finished presenting all evidence and all witnesses, any interest member of the audience may then make comments, present evidence and testimony. There'll be a five limit time limit for each audience member to speak and the request of the comments shall not be repetitive. Very important, otherwise you're going to mute you. All members of the audience who intend to give testimony must do under oath. The applicant or his attorney may cross examine you upon your testimony. The board may also call its own witnesses, present its own evidence respect to any application. It may require more than one hearing to complete this application. This is a continuation as it is. The application would then be carried to a further date, which will be announced at a conclusion of this meeting. We will attempt to adjourn this meeting at ten o'clock. Thank you. I make a motion that we approve the minutes of January seventh. I make a motion, we approve, oh, we gotta, we gotta take.
Um, Ms. Brunel?
Put in both.
Yes.
Uh, yeah, probably. Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Quinlan?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Mr. Afuso?
Yes.
Mr. Cretelli?
Yes.
Ms. Saracene?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Chair Rosenberg?
Yes. I make a motion, we approve the minute, regular meeting of January seventh.
Second.
Ms. Brunel? Ms. Brunel? This is the regular meeting of January seventh.
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Quinlan?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Mr. Afuso?
Yes.
Mr. Cretelli?
Yes.
Ms. Saracene?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Chair Rosenberg?
Yes.
Thank you.
I wanna break this down in parts. I wanna make a resolution to approve the resolutions. Resolution number two oh two one dash oh one dash two one two one oh two, there's two one two one oh three, there's two one two one oh four, and there's two one two oh five. Those are based on reorganization.
So Chair Rosenberg, you're, you're my, you're making the motion?
Yes.
Okay, my second?
I'll second.
Uh, Mr. Quinlan?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Mr. Afuso?
Yes.
Mr. Cretelli?
Yes.
Ms. Saracene?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And Chair Rosenberg?
Just, Mr. Al Fuso, would you please make a resolution for F?
Certainly, Mr. Q. Um, Mr. Chairman, I move that, uh, resolution two zero two one dash oh eight approval of bulk variance for Beth and Dr. Harold Cotler, block seventy eight, lot fourteen, three oh six Monmouth Avenue.
Second.
I'm sorry, who was my second, Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Quinlan?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Hold on a second.
Yes, sorry.
Hold on, I, I thought Mr. Quinlan voted no on the application.
I did. But.
So you don't vote on the resolution?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
That's, that was my fault. Um, Mr. Afuso?
Yes.
Mr. Cretelli?
Yes.
Ms. Brunel?
Yes.
Okay, and Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Also, Mr. Al Fuso, oh nine.
Gladly, uh, I move that resolution two zero two one dash oh nine approval of use in bulk variances for a new single family dwelling for Alan and Marilyn Levine, block forty eight, lot two, two, four thirteen Brinley Avenue be moved.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Uh, Mr. Cretelli?
Yes.
Ms. Brunel?
Yes.
Mr. Afuso?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
And Mr. Quinlan?
Yes.
I make a motion, we approve the variance, two oh two one dash ten, Brinley Ground Pool at five Madison Avenue.
Mr. Quinlan?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Mr. Afuso?
Yes.
Mr. Cretelli?
Yes.
Ms. Saracene?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And Chair Rosenberg?
Yes. We make a motion, we approve both variants, replacing the fire escapes, point properties, one oh eight, Second Avenue.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Quinlan?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Mr. Afuso?
Yes.
Mr. Cretelli?
Yes.
Ms. Saracene?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And Chair Rosenberg?
I'd like to make an announcement that case twenty dash eighteen Dawn and Kevin Damascus Coffee will be carried to our next meeting, which is March eighteenth without further notice. Have a second?
Second. Afuso.
Uh, Mr. Quinlan?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Mr. Afuso?
Yes.
Mr. Cretelli?
Yes.
Ms. Saracene? This is just to carry the application.
Hit the video, hit the camera.
You gotta, are you on mute, Lauren?
She's on mute.
Yes. Okay, uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And Chair Rosenberg?
Yes. Ms. Brunel, you gotta, well, board members must be face on, you can't go blind.
Christie, I'm on a, um, an iPad and I'm having trouble reconnecting the video part.
Okay. When you can, please.
Yeah, I'm trying, but I'm, I haven't had any luck. I may actually have to go use my different computer. So I apologize.
Okay.
Okay, our next case continuation, Mr. Hurley. Mr. Huntley, excuse me, I was, I was close.
Yes, well, uh, Hurley couldn't make it, he sent Huntley. I one time had a, um, saw my name as the attorney for, uh, Titten Falls. They'd apparently mistook me with another gentleman and I called and I said, either it's a typo or I'm way behind in my billing. I couldn't figure out which one. Uh, at any rate, uh, what I would like to do this evening, last time we had completed the testimony of, um, Ms. Paterno, who was, uh, the, um, only member of the applicant LLC. Uh, she had completed her direct testimony, I believe. Uh, she completed, she was being questioned by the board members and I believe by members of the public. But before I go back to Ms. Paterno, I do have an engineer, uh, his name is Vladimir Koshansky.
We've, Mr. Huntley, before we do that, we have to make sure your, your check was given to the, uh, escrow check was given to the borough. I heard it wasn't in as of yesterday.
Uh, I believe it was delivered, uh, today by the client.
Is the client there to?
So, Mr. Huntley, the representation was that she was going to place it in the Dropbox.
Uh, that's correct, yes, and I did, uh.
Can we have confirmation, is your client there?
Um, I don't know if she's on, she was gonna join by telephone.
Well, we need, we need her.
I need confirmation of that.
From her.
Oh, okay, there she is. I'm sorry, I didn't recognize the number.
I dropped it off, uh, Christine was not in our office today, she was supposed to be there at four thirty. Uh, so I dropped it in the box.
Okay, so first of all, the, the, the office is closed because of the snowstorm. So it's not that she wasn't there.
Um, and you left several messages with no phone number and you sent me an email that I wasn't able to respond to because it was from an iCloud and you said you couldn't retrieve it, so I had no way of reaching you directly.
I did leave my phone number with you and I believe it's on record.
Okay.
All right, so, so. So under oath, you're advising the board that you dropped off the check in the Dropbox today, correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Where's the Dropbox?
It's right in front of where you walk in to pay tickets.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Huntley, continue.
Uh, yes, I'm gonna call Mr. Vladimir Koshinsky, who's an architect. Um, I believe, Ms. Dicker, that's the, uh, phone number you, uh, muted before.
Mr. Huntley, how do you spell his, that name, his last name?
K A U.
I'm sorry, go ahead, start over, please.
K A U S H A N S K Y. First name is Vladimir, V L A D I M I R.
Just like it sounds, okay, thank you.
Where is he?
Uh, he is, uh, joining us by telephone.
How is?
Well.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, so expert wit- witnesses is supposed to be available.
In person.
In person.
Hello?
On video, I should say, on video.
All right. I was not aware of that, we did not have a video link for Mr. Koshinsky this evening.
Because the, the, people have the ability to cross examine a witness and, you know, it, it, you can't effectively do that over a phone. Cause the, cause the board gets to assess the demeanor of the person and the, you know, the way of assessing veracity and believability and, you know, can't do that on the phone.
Anyway, we could send, well, he has the, the link is on our website.
Understood that.
Must have a computer, he's an architect.
All right. Uh, what we will have to do is have Mr. Koshinsky carry this matter, his testimony to the, um, next hearing date, I would, uh, Ms. Paterno is also, as you can tell by telephone, she is not live. Oh, I don't know if you wanna take her testimony, might be a telephone.
We, we need live testimony.
Right. Now.
I can't keep continuing this every, this has been going on since October of twenty nineteen.
Well, your attorney, you should, your attorney at this point should know that all testimony has to be with a live person.
Well, I'm sorry, I didn't know that, if I had done that, I would have arranged.
So.
Yeah, Paterno, uh, was scheduled to come to my office, but it's been beautiful downtown Ocean Grove with no parking, we couldn't arrange that.
He doesn't have a computer at home to go on?
No.
I missed it, cause Mr. Val- Vladimir don't have a computer to go on?
Most people work from their office.
All right, we'll have to carry this to the next meeting now.
We don't know how many meetings we got out to figure this out. You may have to renotice, cause we're gonna, our next couple of meetings are full.
Well, I, I, I think by law I need to be heard because.
Ms. Petruno, Ms. Petruno, you are represented by a lawyer. We're not interested in hearing your arguments about this matter. You have a, you have counsel if you can do that.
We will, um, carry this, you will have to notify me of the next hearing date. If it has to be renoticed, it has to be renoticed.
So Christie, what is the?
Uh, the April fifteenth.
When?
April fifteenth.
We have.
That's way too, no, no. I need to be heard.
Thank you.
No, I, I need to be heard the next meeting, I, I, this has been going on since twenty nineteen.
Well, then you should have been prepared and you're not, we were ready to hear it, so Christie, could you mute her, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that this is carried till the April fifteenth meeting.
With notice, I think we have to do it with notice.
With notice. Is that okay, Mr. Huntley?
Oh, I'm very amenable to, uh, notice, the, uh, Asbury Park's declaring a dividend on my application alone.
You, you accepting April fifteenth meeting with notice?
April fifteenth will be fine.
Everybody on screen.
And the, and, um, you waive all time requirements under the municipal land use law, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCadrick, board, good evening, uh, Ms. Dicker, uh, I will.
Wait a minute, Mr. Al Fuso, I second his motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry, the motion's pending, I'll speak to Ms.
Okay, uh, Mr. Quinlan?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Mr. Afuso?
Yes.
Mr. Cretelli?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Saracene?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And Chair Rosenberg?
Yes.
No ways.
Now, Mr. Huntley, you wanna speak to Ms. Christie?
Uh, just that I will contact her tomorrow.
Okay, and I'll, I'll send you the, uh, the Zoom meeting information for April fifteenth. And you might wanna advise your client that you were scheduled back in June, you were scheduled in August or in October, and you chose, because we were holding the meetings via Zoom, you didn't want to appear, so it's not that we did not wanna hear this application.
Well, I think we all assume that when the first adjournment was made, uh, that we.
Corona would be gone?
Yeah.
You can't assume.
I would, I am sure that at this time last year, if I bet everyone on here that we'd be doing this, uh, uh, now, nobody would have taken the bet, so, uh.
Yeah. Oh, I, I understand.
Yeah, we, we.
I would have taken that bet.
With the witness, would have taken that bet, Mr. McCadrick.
I would have, I would have taken the bet. Yeah.
Very good, I thank, word, have a good evening.
Thanks, Mr. Huntley.
Take care.
I make, I make a motion, we adjourn.
Uh, Harvey, Mr. Cohen has his hand up, I'm not sure if he has a question or.
If, if it's about the, the difference of the meeting, that's the only question we could take.
Okay.
Mr. Cohen.
Um, my question is related to the resolutions that weren't read here tonight and weren't attached to the agenda, so essentially, because they weren't read at the meeting and they weren't attached to the agenda, the, the residents in the public or anyone representing themselves pro se doesn't know what the resolution. Um, it doesn't really seem proper to me, how do we even know that the board members read the resolutions?
So, uh, at the time that the resolutions were being, um, introduced, did you raise your hand and object at that time?
I raised my hand the entire time, the video will show that.
All right, cause I, I, I didn't see that.
I didn't either.
Yeah.
Oh, it's recorded, it's recorded, you'll see my hand up during the.
Please record, I think as soon as the meeting started, his hand was up.
Okay. So the resolutions have been adopted and you're object, you, are you objecting to the resolutions being adopted?
I'm not, I'm objecting to the fact that, that normal format is that the resolution's read and then voted on by the board. Um, we don't even know what the resolution says, the public members on this meeting, thirty or more people, don't, don't know what the resolutions say and they may have attended those meetings and now they're voted on and approved, but nobody knows what they say.
So typically, typically how the, the resolutions, it's, it's, um, there's a motion and a second. The resolutions are not read into the record.
Oh, many times that's done, Mr. Katrik, and also the resolution should be attached as additional document, so the public can know what it is and raise their hand and say that.
I, I, I'm addressing, resolutions are not read in their entirety on the record.
Oh, many boards do that, sir.
Okay, so have you ever seen this board do that?
No, I haven't, and I, I've never seen this board even attach it to.
Yeah.
To let the public know what, I mean, again, I, I've never seen this board uphold the DCA requirements for someone on video until now.
So you're changing, you're changing, you're changing subject, we're talking about the resolution, so, and don't interrupt me, please, don't interrupt me.
Yes, sir.
Um, so, um, the policy that you're talking about, that many boards do that, I think is absolutely inaccurate. I've been doing this work for many years, I know you go to a lot of meetings, but I go to many more meetings than you've ever been to, and that is absolutely is not a typical policy. So that is absolutely incorrect.
Well, how come they weren't attached to the agenda tonight, so the public and people out here can know what the resolution says?
So.
And have the board members, have the board members confirmed that they've all read the. If it's read in public, they know what they're voting.
First of all, as far as whether they were attached, you know, that's, as the attorney, that's not something that I, I do, you, you understand that? Correct, you understand that?
Well, I, I made that request of you on Tuesday, if there would be a draft resolution for me to look at, and I received no confirmation, um, from you at all, and actually.
Do you know what a, do you know what a draft resolution is? Do you know what draft resolution is?
It, it's in process, yeah, but.
I'm sorry, you broke up.
They're, they're sent out to make sure that the facts are correct in everyone's eyes.
So a draft resolution is something that's done until something is formalized, correct?
Yes, absolutely, sir.
Okay, so there is no requirement under the law for the board attorney, uh, to provide any party with a, with a, a draft resolution. There's, that's not, there's no requirement as to that.
Okay, if that's, if that's your position, so you, you could have just answered my email saying just that.
So.
Holding the resolution, the public right now does not know.
Your, your, your request I found to be, well, let, let, let me put it this way, the, I know you're, you're talking specifically about Cotler, because that's what you, that's what you requested.
Yes, sir.
So that was approved on, on December thirty, on December third.
Hmm.
All right, so I want the record to reflect the following. At that meeting, Mr. Cohen did not request he be sent a, a, a draft of the resolution when it was prepared. I wanna place on the record, the week of December seventh, twenty twenty, Mr. Cohen did not request that he get a copy of a draft of that resolution. I wanna place on the record, the week of December fourteenth, the week of December twenty first, the week of December twenty eighth, the week of January fourth, twenty twenty one, prior to our January seventh, uh, meeting, when it was potentially going to be on, uh, on our agenda for adoption. He didn't make a request for that draft resolution. The week of January eleventh, Mr. Cohen did not make a request to get a copy of the draft resolution. The week of January eighteenth, he did not make a request for a copy of the draft resolution. The week of January twenty fifth, he didn't make a request for a copy of the draft resolution. The week of February first, he did not make a request for a copy of the draft resolution. The week of February eighth, he did not make a request for a copy of that resolution. In fact, he made a, a request for the copy of that resolution on February sixteenth, two days before, uh, the matter was to be adopted. So I, I want the record to reflect that he, that he made that request two days before the meeting to get a copy of a draft resolution. Um, so, uh, Mr. Stone did not make that request, but Miss, Miss, Mr. Cohen did make that, that what I consider be a very late in the process request, and it, it, it really, um, hearkens me back to a comment that Mr. Stone made that during this process, that Mr. Cohen has a, has a habit of making late requests and does it, uh, to, uh, delay matters for the purpose of delaying matters, and I think that was what Mr. Stone, um, was, uh, implied. And of course, I, Mr. Stone is not here, uh, to, uh, discuss this matter, but the, the resolutions have been approved and, uh, that's my position.
Uh, well, Mr. Katrik, I'm glad you did put all that on the record, but since it was over four meetings, it was a very, it should be a very detailed document if I had the chance to see it, and, and for the record, I gave you that time. And, and then I made my request when it should be done and I could give you a note or two.
You don't get, you don't, what do you mean, you give me the time, you, you don't give me the time. Well, you don't, you don't, you don't, you don't understand the fact that you don't have the right to get a draft resolution. Nobody does. Mr. Stone doesn't have the right to get a draft resolution. That's not a requirement, and, uh, that, that's all I'm gonna, that's all I'm gonna say, that's, uh.
Well, for the record, Mr. Katrik, does the public have the right to read the resolution before it's approved?
I, I'm not getting involved anymore, so, so I'll agree with you.
Well, okay, thank you very much, so have a great evening.
You too.
Anybody else in this situation? Anybody else in this situation?
I don't see any hands raised.
Then I go back to make a motion we adjourn till
second.
March eighteen.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Hold on, favor?
Hi.
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 Any nays? Pass. See everybody next month.
Yeah, next month.
Good day, Rose. Be safe, everybody, be well.
You're welcome.